Okay, it's 7:00 PM. This is the meeting, the May 26th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're doing this remotely because of the order from the Governor. So to start off on this meeting, I'm going to just read these preliminaries. So everybody understands how this works. My name's Morris Apolo, I'm the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. We'll start with the board members, Beth Cassavian.
Present.
John LeBeau?
Present, Mr. Chairman.
Jim Kane?
Present.
John Samia?
Present.
Okay, thank you. With staff, when I call your name, could you please respond in the affirmative? Kevin Misakar?
Present.
Valerie Clemmie?
Present.
Angela Snell? Kevin, is Angela gonna be here?
Yes, she is.
Okay, we'll pick her up if she comes in later. Bernie Cahill?
Present.
Keith Alms?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, there'll be some, we believe, some speakers on the agenda. Chris Mena? He might be joining us later. Victor De Oliveria?
Anna representing Victor.
Okay, so it's gonna be you, Anna?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Faberman? Is your mic on, Mark? Well, I can see you. I don't think your mic's on.
Is it on now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, good.
Thank you. So this is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This particular meeting will feature public comment because we have a Class II license application hearing. Ensuring, okay, I lost that one. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Hangouts as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to share screen your computer unless asked by the chairperson or staff person. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now going to turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, I will cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then a second. Please hold until your name is called. Also, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or some background noise. To mute and unmute your telephone, dial *6. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold your name, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking and background noise. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After the presentation, members of the board will be given the opportunity to ask questions. As for the public hearing section, after the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford up to three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Okay, so we are ready to move on to our regular agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Okay, we have to have a roll call vote. Ms. Cassavian?
Aye.
LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Mrs. Apolo, aye. Okay, we're gonna skip over item two. The minutes won't be ready until the next meeting. Does anybody have any announcements or reports this evening? Okay, leaving none. Next, we'll move on to the town manager's report. Mr. Misakar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening on the manager's report, I wanted to announce that I've received a retirement notification from Police Chief Jay Hester. You all know that Jay has spent virtually his entire career here with the town and has served in the rank of Patrol Officer Sergeant and Chief and has performed above and beyond the line of duty in each and every position that he's served. I do want to let everyone know that I've been in conversations with the Chief about his interest in retiring for quite some time. I think it probably extends way back into January, if not back into December. So this is the decision that he has been contemplating and actually provided me significant advance notice of. However, with the complications of the coronavirus and his duties associated with the town, the town's response to that, he delayed his formal announcement or notice to me until just a week or so ago. So I have been thinking over the course of the last five months about a recruitment process and I feel very strongly that we have a significant number of officers within the department that would make great chiefs. And therefore, I will be developing a formal process but will more than likely not extend the ability for anyone to apply outside of the current organization. So Chief Hester intends to be with the town in his current role through June 30th of this year. So we do have six weeks or so to put a new chief in place, which I am comfortable with doing, given the Chief's advance notice. This in no way is a reflection of anything concerning the Chief related to the coronavirus, but again, has been in his mind and he's been planning it for quite some time. And now it's time to formally announce his intention to do so. So, Mr. Chairman, I, yeah, sure. I can continue on into the COVID update and I will share my screen in order to get that started. And with your permission, I'll have Angela Snell participate in this process as well.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Okay, so I'll start off with the statistics related to the coronavirus in town. As you know, we had our first case on March 19th and since then, including today's update of one additional positive case, we've seen 270 positive cases in town. That's an increase of 37 from the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. This has occurred over the period of 69 days with 3.9 cases per day, which is a reduction of nearly a third of one case per day from the last meeting. I've provided the two most recent seven-day periods in the current seven-day period of May 20th through May 26th. And you will see that we are making great progress. You know, over those prior two weeks, we had identical number of cases and cases per day. And we are now seeing a further decline with 17 positive cases over the last seven days, 2.43 cases per day, and still remain less than 1% of the entire population having become infected or tested positive, excuse me, with the virus. Also, I wanted to update the board on the number of deaths that have been identified as COVID-19 related on their death certificates that are received by the town clerk. To date, we've had 32, which is an increase of four from the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. 26 of those cases are clustered, which is an increase of four from the last Board of Selectmen's meeting. And 79 deaths in total COVID identified and other deaths have occurred since your last, or excuse me, over the time period of March 19th through May 26th, 2020. That's an increase of nine deaths with four of those being COVID identified since your last meeting. Put the positive cases in context. With 270, that's 11.85% of positive cases having passed away. It's a reduction of 2/10 of a percent and still within a population context, it's less than 1/10 of 1% of deaths. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we again extend our deepest condolences and sympathies. Our thoughts and prayers are with anyone that has struggled with COVID-19 and especially those who have lost a loved one. So moving, moving on, wanted to talk a little bit about the status of town buildings and how we're going to begin reopening. And I can see that my slide does not have all the parts on it. So I definitely apologize about that. From the general reopening standpoint, town buildings will remain closed to the public throughout the entire Phase 1 of the state-designated opening phases. We are making significant process or progress with our reopening plans. One, starting on June 1st, next Monday, we'll begin to bring more staff into the buildings. By that time, we'll have all of our certification requirements in hand. We'll have training of all, training materials for all town staff. We'll have appropriate signage within the building and posted on the exterior windows near the front door, identifying that we've met all the requirements that are required of an office building like the town hall. And we will still have to remain within the 25% capacity of each and every individual office space. But we will enable departments to bring more staff into the building and have more staff on hand. As we look forward to Phase 2, we do see the opportunity to be able to slowly reopen to the public. We will need to be able to get beyond 25% staffing levels for a short period of time, preferably a week or a week and a half in advance of the public coming back, given the staggered work schedules that we have in order to be comfortable. And I'm not really in a big hurry related to opening back up to the public. I'm very pleased with the level of work that we're able to do and I also see the requirement for adding potentially additional staffing to be able to manage either an appointment schedule or just managing queuing coming into the building so we don't get a significant number of people waiting in line and having to have a lot of people pass by each other as they're going to the various offices within the building. So I'm very proud of the reopening task force. It's been co-chaired by Kristen Lass and Angela. They've done a, they've done a wonderful job in bringing us into compliance with the Phase 1 requirements. And we'll look forward to make some changes to our operating conditions on June 1st and provide advance notice to both the board and the public whenever we're able to, again, reopen to the public. So moving on to the second aspect of this part of the conversation is an update of what we're gonna do with our parks programs and other events in the summer. So Angela's able to unmute and provide an overview of this, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Hi, this is Angela Snell and I wanted to give an update on the summer programs. Due to the uncertainty and concerns for COVID-19, we have made the difficult decision to cancel our summer recreation programs, including the summer playground program. Keeping the children and staff safe is our first concern for us during this difficult time. We have waited as long as possible to make this decision but feel we must give families the opportunity to make alternative plans now. The prep work, hiring, and training that goes into running these programs is challenging during normal times, but planning for ways to operate during the pandemic is even more demanding. At this time, we have also made the decision to cancel special events such as the annual 4th of July program and summer concerts through Labor Day due to financial concerns and the gathering size limitations. Our Parks Division is working hard to keep maintaining our outdoor spaces so residents have a place to go outside, walk, and enjoy nature. We will be working with existing local sports organizations to schedule the fields for Phase 2 when they open up for small group team practices. So people understand some of the challenges we would face with running summer programs. We would need additional PPE and cleaning supplies needed to run the programs. Staff and/or children would have to self-quarantine for two weeks if someone in the program had COVID-19 while attending our program. The unknown financial impact of a program closure as well as parents having to find last-minute childcare was a concern. The cost of sanitizing the building after a closure. Keeping children six feet apart and in small groups while participating in camp activities would be difficult. Children would be expecting to participate in all of our camp group activities. Some of the other things that are on hold right now are our picnic permits. These are due to the gathering limitations. Picnics typically have 50 to 100 people at them and we usually have two per day. So for now, those are on hold. Also, our tennis courts have recently opened today at Dean Park, Coolidge School, and Oak Middle School. The courts and the whole Shrewsbury High Athletic Complex is currently still closed. And basketball courts are still closed, that is not part of Phase 1. We do get many questions on that because people see that it says courts can be open, but it does not apply to basketball courts. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Ms. Snell or Mr. Misakar related to this? Okay, leaving none. Thank you, Angela, for bringing us up to date on this. It can be a quiet summer, but I think it's unavoidable. So, thanks.
It's not, can I just say it's not gonna be a quiet summer? Because actually, our parks are very busy right now with everybody home. We appreciate that people are getting out to the parks. And you know, our maintenance is really working hard to keep up with the demand. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Misakar, do you have anything else right now? Are we gonna move on to the budget report?
Yeah, I'm ready to move on to the budget report when you are.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't pull the trigger fast enough when you called announcements. I was a little short on the mute button. I do have an announcement. I simply wanted to take a moment to recognize all the effort that went into the virtual Memorial Day ceremony yesterday. I think it was an absolutely well-conceived, well-executed effort. I think it appropriately addressed the holiday and the issues about the holiday. I want to compliment everyone who was involved in it and I've heard some very positive things about it. So particularly, I know Angela was, had a lot to do with it and I know Mark Sarah at Shrewsbury Media Connection as well. Don't want to accidentally forget anybody else, but I think the community very much enjoyed, for lack of a better word, being able to participate remotely in the Memorial Day ceremony.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Misakar?
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. So board members, you'll recall that we've been working on both revenue analysis and expenditure reduction plans for fiscal year 21. I remain confident that although our local receipt revenue has been significantly reduced over the past six weeks that we've been in the current situation, that fiscal year 20 should still be able to move forward without running a deficit. We've been able to reduce expenditures in certain areas. Many of those related to the lack of building occupancy and some other programs that we've not had to offer, which has reduced some of our expenditures. So I'm confident that departments have really buckled down and put us in a position where we won't experience a deficit in fiscal year 20. At least, it does not look that way right now on May 26th. Departments have undertaken expenditure reduction levels at 3.5%, 5.15%, and 6.34% below levels presented to the Finance Committee throughout the winter months. And now we've polished those into kind of a rough state and we've shifted our focus to developing the 112th budget for July of 2020. And with that, focused in on two different revenue models. In order to approve the 112th budget, as I've previously discussed, I will seek formal action by the Board of Selectmen no later than your next meeting of June 9th. This will be done so in accordance with Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 that provides us with this unique opportunity to do a continuing appropriation where the Board of Selectmen authorizes submission to the Department of Revenue. And there is no action required by town meeting in order to put this continuing appropriation budget into place for as long as the state of emergency exists. And once town meeting is able to meet, the 112th budget will be automatically eliminated, but we will certainly have to live within any means or any expenditures that have already been incurred and authorized through the 112th process. So with regards to that July budget development, the revenue model that we are using to make sure that we find a fine line and stay within a safe but not overly aggressive range with our revenue model would include a reduction in total revenues on hand on an annualized basis of $3,654,371, which is a reduction of 2.53%. Now, that's 2.53%, it seems like a small number, but certain aspects of our budget, which are significant, including utility revenues and other enterprise funds, we do not see a significant impact from them. And any revenue impact would be equally offset by expenditure reduction since they're self-contained accounts. So at this point in time, we've left those revenues as they were and presented to the Finance Committee over the winter months. To get to the 3.654 million dollar reduction, we've eliminated $38,000 in our estimate for new growth. We've eliminated $1.5 million from our state aid estimate, estimate, 3.6, 1.3 million from local receipts and $776,000 in total utilization of free cash. With regards of the use of free cash in the operating budget, as I had mentioned in passing to the board, I plan to dedicate and shift $835,000 in free cash that was going to go into the Town Stabilization or Rainy Day Fund and utilize it within the operating budget for fiscal year 2021. That'll increase the amount of free cash used in the operating budget by 267%. But I think it is obviously prudent to not put funds in our rainy day account, given the current situations that we're in, and utilize them to help reduce the total impact of the current situation that the town faces. With regards to capital expenditures, as we're considering July and beyond, we plan to reduce the total expenditures by $775,024, which will reduce the capital investments that we make by over 41% for the coming fiscal year. Those numbers are very similar to the total amount of free cash that's being reduced because it's my feeling that we need to preserve some reserve levels in the town and ensure that we remain as stable as possible as we don't know what's around the corner for fiscal year 22. We could very well be in just as tough situation in fiscal year 22 as we're looking for fiscal year 21. So we are working on the development of actual expenditures for July 2020. It will be within this context of at least $3.6 million being reduced from the revenue model. I do want to strongly caution that our reduction in state aid is subject to whatever comes out of the legislature and is recommended by the administration and the House and Senate Ways and Means Committees. And I think that there's a chance that state aid could be reduced beyond the overall level of 6.3%. But we've done a lot of analysis and tried to pay attention to what's happening with the conversation relative to education aid and the general government aid and tried to make an accurate representation without overshooting and causing more harm than is actually needed. I continue to feel that the 112th budget is the appropriate path to take, given the significant uncertainty in state aid. I do not want to get too far into the fiscal year and only to find out that we need to reduce state aid by a significant higher number than that because we'll have a much shorter period to absorb those revenue reductions within. And thus, the impact on the operating budget will be actually harder than it would have been through this more conservative approach. So I also just wanted to take the opportunity to update the board on a related matter and then I'm happy to go back and take any questions that you may have on the budget approach. I wanted to update on the aid that we're aware of that can come into the town related to COVID-19. There's three primary areas. The first area is the roughly $27,000 grant that was awarded to the town in early April of this year. They came in from the Public Health Trust. We are utilizing that to help offset extraordinary costs related to COVID-19 in our response there, too. We know that we're eligible for up to 75% of eligible costs through FEMA. And FEMA's costs are, reimbursement program is likely centered on police, fire, emergency management, and public health response, the actual direct disaster-related entities of the town that are, they're working on the front lines to respond to this crisis. And then the third category, which we learned about late, more around May 18th, is CARES Act funding, which is funds that have flowed through the federal stimulus program. In the town, the state was awarded per capita, excuse me, the state was awarded over $2 billion in CARES Act funding and has dedicated $502,000 for city and town. And they've decided to distribute that on a per capita basis, which means the town of Shrewsbury is eligible for a little over $3.3 million of CARES Act funding. Now, that's a significant number, and one has to remember that those dollars must be stretched and utilized for the town's eligible costs for our response directly related to COVID-19 between the time period of March 1st and December 31st, 2020. We are able to use CARES Act funding for the 25% match that's required under the FEMA disaster relief funding. And we know that there are two rounds of funding that will occur, one for fiscal year 20 with our applications due on June 5th for the period of March 1st through June 30th. And then there'll be another round in fiscal year 21 with an application period that's to be determined. So it's really good news that we have the opportunity to access these funds. We're bringing a financial manager on board that will be funded through this program, through this funding to help us manage this. I think that's the best approach to really centralize our response and ensure that we're leveraging each dollar to the best of our ability and also stay within the parameters of the grant program as they are provided to us. The last thing that we want to do is become overzealous and request funding that we're not actually eligible for and then get caught up in negative audit comments, you know, two or three years down the line once that occurs, and it surely will occur. So we are developing our application. At this point in time, we will be cautious in our fiscal year 20 reimbursement application. We will have to project throughout the balance of the fiscal year for the costs that will be related to our reopening requirements, including various things you may see in other retailers like Plexiglas Shields, PPE, hand sanitizer, things like that. But as we assemble the application, we'll keep the board up to date. Again, it's a short timeframe. It is due on June 5th. So with that, I'd be happy to go back and have a conversation with the board about anything related to fiscal year 21, July 2020 for fiscal year 21, and then the aid that the town is eligible for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Board members, why don't we just run down the list and see if anybody has any questions? Mrs. Cassavant?
I like that we're doing the budget early in the meeting. I appreciate this because I feel like I'm fresher and better able to focus on this really important information. I, I still think that the 112 budget is the way to go. I'm concerned that if we were to try to create a budget that would be a 12-month budget, that we would end up reducing personnel in ways that wouldn't be necessary. And I'm hoping that we are able to leverage some of the state aid that we get, and that I know that the state is working to preserve their aid to cities and towns so that we wouldn't be able to decimate some of our municipal departments that are already working at minimal staffing levels. So I am concerned about that, and every one of those percentages, in my mind, equates to cuts to personnel and cuts to the services that we're able to provide to residents. So taking the more conservative approach to me at this point makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lebo, do you have anything?
To follow up on Selectman Cassavant's comments, I mean, I do agree. I think we need to make, we don't need to make long-term decisions until we need to make them. So I agree. I think we should do this incrementally. There's so much uncertainty out there. We don't want to inadvertently position us poorly. So certainly, this information is, to some degree, sobering and to some degree, not. I mean, it's bad, but it could be worse. But I think this approach, beginning with the 112 budget, is the way to go. And that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kane, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'm in the same position I was a couple of meetings ago, and that is we should prepare for the worst, have our various contingencies outlined, as I believe the manager is doing, but rush into making absolutely no decisions. I suspect the 112 remains the way to go, but I'm very pleased to see that Kevin is running a variety of options, all negative, but regardless, running those options, preparing to maximize the reimbursement, etc. So I think we're going in the right direction once again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Samia.
I share the same comments as our colleagues. Just a couple of specific questions I have on the CARES Act funding. The $3.3 million, is that going to provide us relief for ordinary course expenditures or is it only incremental expenditures through the 30th of June?
The expenditures that are eligible have to be directly retired or tied to our response to the pandemic. They can't be used to supplement or, they can't be used to supplant any previously budgeted municipal funds. However, we did not budget for a lot of the activities that we've had to undertake and a lot of the expenditures that we've incurred. So these funds will indeed provide us with a relief, but you should think of that relief as ultimately replenishing free cash that we otherwise would not have been able to do, given the timing of this. So when we're ultimately able to close out fiscal year 20 books, this will be another revenue source that will offset the extraordinary expenses that we've incurred since March 1st related to, you know, a whole number of things, whether it's PPE for non-public safety staff, you know, signage, you know, locking down the parks and things like that that just weren't in the budget when we had to do those type of things.
Okay, thank you. Is the second round expected to have the same rules? So, or have they come out with those, or is there any additional flexibility? Or it's not going to be like that 2008, 2009 stimulus, right? We haven't received any idea about that. This is going to be the same rules?
So the only potential change that may come with the second round for fiscal year 21, and I don't want to get anyone's hopes up, but there has been conversation in Washington about allowing municipalities to use CARES Act funding to offset revenue reductions. And the state has said that obviously, if that becomes available to municipalities, that they would allow us to do that. But otherwise, as far as expenditure reimbursement goes, it's my understanding the rules will be the same both before and after July 1st.
Okay, thank you. And just to, just to further comment, time is our ally here in terms of providing as much clarity as we can get before we can approve a budget. So 112, as long as we continue to get information, it's better to be conservative and not run into that potential situation of being in a deficit. So just continue to go the course and then approve 112 on June 9th. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I agree with what the other members said. Right now, it is too bad that the CARES Act is as highly restrictive as it is. I understand why, but we had needs that were created that I think should have been covered under it. But be that as it is, we're going to have to make do with it. I do think a very, very cautious approach, especially for the first three months or until we have some certainty from, from the state with cherry sheets is the way to go. I wouldn't, I agreed, put off, somebody said, we don't make any decisions that we don't have to make. Capital spending, unfortunately, that's going to take a hit, and when we, when we, when we don't keep up that schedule, as we all know, it's very difficult to make it back because if we don't spend whatever we were going to spend on the capital budget this year because we don't have the funds, trying to catch up next year just pushes the next one off. But there's nothing we can do with that. I think the most important thing at this point is to try to maintain the service levels that we provide and hold off on those other, I don't want to say discretionary expenses, but the ones that don't have to be made right now. I think it's important to keep the service levels up. And I'm glad with the way the manager's been approaching this. I'd like to say I look forward to putting the budget together, but I don't know this year if I'd be so excited about it. But I think the staff, the manager and the staff has done a lot of groundwork, a lot of preparation and research. And I think that's going to make it a lot easier when we're going to have to make these tough decisions. So, Mr. Mizikar, thank you very much, and thank the staff because I know there's a lot of work here. And trying to budget for unknowns is very, very difficult. So again, thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say, ask any questions? Okay, then, Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything else on the budget?
No, no, thank you for the comments, and we will keep the board posted. There may be an outside chance that we're ready, you know, by sometime next week, and I would love to get the application to the state as soon as possible. But I'll keep you posted and determine if a special meeting would, would make sense to get that budget put in place or not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to our meetings and hearings. Our next meeting is a continued public hearing with Victor de Oliveria. Anna Carolina is going to be representing him. And this is for Icar Auto on 306 Boston Turnpike for a Class II license. Ms. Carolina, this stand your application has been amended. Do you want to tell us what your new request is?
Yeah, sure. So basically, I sent the revised proposal to Bernard, and we're trying not to change anything on the, on the approved plan. If you look at the back of the parking lot, we have nine spaces. We're trying to take two of the overnight spaces to sell, to have the autos, you know, for display for selling and the next space to also do the selling. We have two mechanics working and four lifts inside, so we're trying to use two of the lifts as, you know, extra storage for an overnight basis as well. So I would see, I'm just trying to see if it's possible for us to have the license to sell at least three cars only since we're only trying to increase the income certainly.
Sure, okay, thank you. Any members of the board have any questions? Ms. Cassavant? I think you turned your mic off.
Oh, sorry, I thought I turned it on. I have a question for Ms. Diaz. How many cars are you planning on selling? You had said a couple. A couple to me means two. I just want to make sure that we're both thinking the same number of cars.
Sure. We're trying to sell no more than three cars, so two to three, we're totally okay with it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lebo, do you have any questions, comments?
I'm good right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kane?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry about that. No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Samia, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, yeah, just to, just to clarify, so the application for a license will be modified, so changing from 22 parking spaces to two to three, just so I have clarity?
It would be, they're requesting three, be able to sell three cars, have three cars on the lot to sell.
Okay, so would have a revised application, okay.
Well, what we, what?
Or as amended, presented to us.
When we, if we decide to grant the license and we put conditions on it, we, we could put whatever amount that we want.
Okay, thank you.
I know, well, Mr. Cahill, you took some time to review this. What, I'd like to get some input from you before we make a decision.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I did review the latest iteration of the revised plans for this. I thought it was a reasonable improvement, a much bigger improvement even than what was previously before the board. I think it's a really good idea to make use of the two internal areas that they use currently for repairs as extra storage for overnight parking. So if it's a car being repaired currently and it's still going to be repaired, they can stay inside the house, inside the unit, if you will. And then if there is, you know, there's another one the next day, they can just swap out which cars where, but to actually utilize those spaces inside, I think it's a pretty clever idea, and I think it's a good idea. So I'd really, the memo, I think, spoke to it all. I did say that the board is generally in favor of this iteration of the plan. We, the planning department, if you will, is generally in favor of this. We think it's a good idea. I would remind the board, this still has to go to the Board of Appeals for a special permit for auto sales in the zoning district. So it would get another level of review and another look at the plans through the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I know that we've all noticed that this is not the same survey plan that we had seen before. But this plan that is presented is a plan that, that we used when the last applicant, I think it was AMCO, but I could be wrong, came in, and the board did accept that plan. I think the space sizing and the layout is the same as what we had seen before. So I think I'm comfortable with that. I don't know what the ZVA will be, but I don't think it's a complicated plan and the measurements of the area, even if the scaling might not be 100%. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'm not at a point where I would require them to go back and do a whole new plan, given that we've approved, we've approved license, a license before with the same plan that's before us now. So, okay. Any other board members have any comments or questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience, excuse me, who'd like to be heard on this? Okay. Mrs. Carolina, do you have anything you want to add before I ask for a motion to close the hearing?
No, I do not. I just want to thank you all for all your help so far.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if you have no further public comment, nobody has any questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Lebo?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, so we have before us the application to, for a Class II license, currently requesting three cars available to sale. Does anybody have any comments or want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Cassavant?
I make a motion to grant the, the license to Victor de Oliveria, owner of Icar Auto, Inc., 306 Boston Turnpike, for a Class II license, but I'd like the license to state that they cannot have more than three vehicles at a time for sale.
Okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? There being none, I'll ask for a vote. Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Lebo?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, Ms. Carolina, you can check with Valerie tomorrow, and you're going to have to go to the, I think we have Bernie's going to, still has to go to the zoning board, right?
That's correct. So they'll still have to apply to the zoning board for a special permit.
Right, okay, so they're going to have to really wait on the license until that happens. So, Ms. Carolina, you want to contact the planning department or the building inspector and get an application in to go to the zoning board to get, to be allowed to have a car lot there. We just give you the license to sell. The zoning board has to give you permission to use the lot for that. So if you get in touch with Mr. Cahill or the building inspector, they can help you out tomorrow, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next, our business is a continued public hearing. Thank you. Okay, next, water of business is a continued public hearing. With Keith, Keith Lindon, proposed manager of 81 Clinton Pub LLC, DBA Billy's Pub on 81 Clinton Street. Board members, we've again been asked for a continuance because of the complications with this COVID virus getting worked on and getting inspections done. So if it's okay with the board, I'd ask to continue this hearing to June 9th at 7:20 Val, is that okay? Valerie?
Hi, sorry. Yeah, that should be okay. Yep.
Okay, so could I have a motion to continue the hearing until June 9th at 7:20?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Oh, aye, okay. Then we're, we're off to our next water of business. It's a presentation with Mr. Cahill, our town planner, and Mark Faverman, the consultant from Faverman Design to discuss the town center way signing, I mean wayfinding. We, as you know, have been studying the town center parking, zoning. And the town applied for a $15,000 grant to create a wayfinding plan, sign design, et cetera. And the committee that was formed have come to the point where ready to recommend to the town, to the board, sign designs and potential locations for the wayfaring signs when funding becomes available. So having said that, Mr. Cahill, would you like to start the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the introduction. Mark and I are here this evening to present to you the wayfinding, the final iteration of the wayfinding and branding designs. I wanted to give a very brief overview to the public and to the board, where we've been and why why we're doing this, where it came from, where it started. So as you all heard from me before, talking about the town center zoning, which is our next agenda item or your next agenda item. This started back in 2016 with the master plan for the entire town. Part of that master plan had a section that was about strengthening and preserving Shrewsbury's town center. And within that was promoting the town center, right, as a gathering place in a neighborhood and really coming up with some definition for the town center and doing different studies about it. So one of those studies, we did the, these are called Mass Downtown Initiative Grants. So the first one we did was for a parking study. And after we did the parking study, we realized we had a real need for people locating where things like parking are and getting around, whether you're pedestrians or an automobilist you're driving. It wasn't always clear how to get from point A to point B, especially when our parking is so disparate in the town center. So from there, we took it to the next step, which was to apply for another MDI grant, they're called Mass Downtown Initiative Grant, which was for a wayfinding grant, which was in last summer, we received that and we started it with Faverman Designs. So we did all that. And at the same time, as you know, concurrently, last summer, we kicked off the town center zoning district to write up as a town center district for the town center area, which is roughly Main Street and Maple as it crosses Grafton Street, Route 140, Boylston Street. So that's where we are today. We engage with Mr. Faverman and he's going to walk you through tonight what it is that we did, or as I say, the wayfinding and branding committee did in those five or six months that it worked on this. As you know, we were going to have this meeting in early March and it got obviously caught up in events. So it's running a little late, but we're still on schedule for end of June deadline. So I will turn it over to Mr. Faverman. And what I'm going to do when Mark takes over is I'm going to be presenting the slides. I'm going to be, I should say, operating the slides for him. So, Mark, why don't you give a brief introduction and then let me know when you want me to start the slides and I'll go ahead.
Thank you, Bernie. So what's interesting about this program, the MDI program, it's part of the Department of Housing and Community Development. And it's probably the most efficient program of all state agency programming. It has almost no overhead. It just pays fees for consulting. The consultants are chosen from around the state. And we happen to be the ones that deal with wayfinding and branding. The, it's highly competitive, I want to add that. So for Shrewsbury to win it is is an accolade. It's quite good that that you did because it's very competitive. It's the, I think, the most competitive category of all the grants. So I'll put that out. So you show the first slide. I only have 10 slides, so I'm going to try to make this very efficient as well tonight.
Okay, one second, Mark, let me just pull it up for you. Hold on, it's not opening. Oh, all right, here we go. I got it now. And we're going to this. Can everyone see that?
It's on the screen, Bernie.
Okay.
So we'll start, that's the, that's the cover slide, the second slide, Bernie. What we did as a group is we looked at the, literally the texture, the history, what made up Shrewsbury, what the things that caused it to, the looks of things. We still aren't, oh, here we go, okay.
Yeah.
So from historic buildings to historic personages to activities that are important to the community, to some of the very elegant homes and the use of the water. So that's just a feeling. We went through a lot of that type of touchy feeling of what the community was and what it represents. Next. So the process was to ask questions and try to answer them. Where is Shrewsbury? What is it? How would you describe it in one, two, or three or more words? We'll go over that in a second. What colors do you associate with it? What symbols express the image or brand of Shrewsbury? And what would you like Shrewsbury to be in the future? An aspirational question. Additional thoughts on public art and street furniture are also discussed. Next slide, please. So I'll give you some time to sort of go over this and look at it. But when we asked the question, what is one word, what's a one-word description? The committee spent a lot of time expressing what they thought it was. And then we asked for two words and then we asked for three or more words. And out of the three or four, three or more words, we sometimes get a slogan. And the very last one that was suggested was the core of the Commonwealth. And I thought, I thought that was quite good. And we'll show you how that can be integrated in a moment. But we looked at symbols, we looked at colors, and we asked a lot of, you know, pertinent questions. Next. So here's the core of the Commonwealth again. Next slide. When we looked at everything in town, we sort of saw this image or something like this image as sort of a key brand type of feeling to the to the town. Next. So these are some of the sign designs that we came up with. We tried it in many different colors. We tried it with many different backgrounds. And this seemed to be the one that most people liked the best. Next. So here's a family of elements that how it could be used in different ways. Some are simple directional signs, some are directory signs. There's even a banner there shown. But also parking and how to get to parking and there are ways in which to approach that. Next. Here's an example on a fairly busy area. And you can see how the sign would stand out. Next. And this is the map that the committee came up with to show placement of the various types of elements. And that was also a very thoughtful process. So any questions? Or you want to go through the slides quick, I did them very quickly. If you want to go through them again, happy to. Bernie can insight too.
Before I ask board members question, Mark, I just wanted to add that this wayfinding really was supposed to be focused on the town center. And so that's, that's where we put our, our efforts. And the other thing I just wanted to say, I, I did ask Bernie if you could keep this brief. But it's too bad we didn't have at least one of the other towns that you, that you work with. Because these signs have worked out quite well. At board members, when I was working out in Southbridge, I saw some of these wayfaring signs, wayfinding signs in various areas around the town center. And they really were, they stood out, they were easy to read, they were easy to understand where they were trying to point you to. So it would, when you, when you see the real ones in place, and I saw them in another town too, I can't remember the name of it, but they do appear to be very effective. Of course, the thing is, you know, how you fund them, but first you have to have the design and the plan. And that's where we are now, so.
Would you like me to have some for the, your June 9th meeting of some of the previous ones? I'm happy to give them to Bernie to show to everyone.
Sure, if the board wants, wants to take a look at a few of them, I, I think it would be helpful, although I think these came out really well. In any event, so board members, anybody have any questions, comments, opinions on the design? And that, the, I mean, this was the point of the meeting, is to see if the board agrees that that this would be an appropriate design to use around the center of town. So we'll just follow the, the pattern we've been doing. Ms. Cassavant, do you have any, any questions, comments, observations?
I like the design quite a bit. I think the colors are really inviting. I, I like what you chose to represent, you know, the center, the common. That to me is just quintessential Shrewsbury. I'm not sure I'm sold on core of the Commonwealth. Is that already been decided on? Or is there still room for tweaking that?
I, I think you, it's up to you. We're suggesting that was the best slogan that came out of the process. And it's up to you as, you know, the leaders of the town to decide whether you want to use it or not.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing that's interesting, the core, apparently there were apple orchards early on in Shrewsbury. So the sort of play on words with apple core and core of the Commonwealth is kind of neat.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Lebo, do you have any thing you'd like to say?
Well, first, I'm wondering if we could go to the slide with all the phrases and the words on it, just for a bit. I mean, honestly, my comments very much align with what Selectman Cassavant said. I think the photograph, it's very iconic, the church, the bandstand certainly establishes place. But similar to what Selectman Cassavant said, I need a little time to think about core of the Commonwealth.
Okay, we can work on that. I think the most important thing right now is to find out if the board agreed with the design and basically the plan. But points taken. I'm not sure we had unanimity on the committee on core of the Commonwealth, although say a majority of the people like it, liked it. I will say though, it was amazing how when we started and came up with some different ideas about what the sign should look like, the entire committee, and they were what, eight or? I don't know, there's at least eight people on it, I think, coalesced around that, around that design that we have rather quickly. So I do think, and I hope you agree, that that we keyed it on the right, on the right scene to signify the center of town. But do you have anything else, Mr. Lebo?
Nope, that's it for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kane, you have anything?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I must admit, I find the signage entirely too modern, in my humble opinion. I think if we're going to stick with the, the picture shown, that, that right angle, very, to me, very very current, very cutting lines is not colonial at all. I also find the core of the Commonwealth to be a poor man's effort on Worcester being the heart of New England. Like, I love the Shrewsbury font, wonderful, the picture fantastic. I find the sign just to be right out of the 70s, way too modern. And I find core of the Commonwealth just having no connection to it. Core is a very hard, cold word, in my opinion. I don't know why we need to be anything other than Shrewsbury Town Center. I like the one on the right relative to language. Again, I'll stop. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you though, just to be clear, are you talking about if, if this had more of that colonial Victorian styling on the signs, so that the lines weren't as harsh? That you think that that would be a better presentation?
Yes, very much so. If you recall, the historic district commission already has signage. I don't think we should be 180 degrees from the, some of the signage that's already in and around the center of town. This, to me, just screams like the Equitarium and elements of Boston, which are out of that brutalist phase. And I just don't see this in the town of Shrewsbury. I really don't. I see the sign on the right relative to its overall design, right on target, Shrewsbury Town Center, fine. Wonderful, great picture, love it.
Yeah.
And again, I don't want to belabor the point of the core.
No, that's okay. Just, just wanted to make sure we understood what you were talking about. Because that was the point of this meeting, was to come forward with this. Mr. Faverman, are you understanding what he's saying?
We would be happy to attempt to frame the sign in a different way. And by not having core of the Commonwealth and only having town center allows this, the system, whatever it morphs into, to be used throughout the town later on. So you can have town center at the bottom or you can have a neighborhood name at the bottom, depending on where the signs go. So I, you know, I can see something very positive, taking the core of Commonwealth the slogan off. In terms of the structure, well, let us look at the, the format that the historical markers or historical signs use and see if somehow we could do something with that structure, with these.
There was one city or town that you did that had that more colonial type look. I can't describe it other than they looked a lot, the posts in that looked, I think, more like the light posts in the center with that kind of detail on it. Wasn't there a town that you did with that?
Sturbridge, I think we did more with. And what's interesting, since our last meeting with Shrewsbury, other towns have started to implement, including Chelmsford, Woburn, and Wellesley. So I have even more examples of implemented programs coming out of this MDI program from years back. So I'd like to share all that with you. And if I can get some of those to Bernie this week, he can distribute them to the Board of Selectmen and have everybody see these. And then we can go back to the drawing board, so to speak, and look at a different framing device, if that's the preference of everyone.
Okay. Ms. Kane, do you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Samia?
The only thing, I think it's already, all the comments have been covered, agree with core of the Commonwealth. But this is one, I don't, wouldn't say that designing these is my area of expertise, but examples would be helpful just to see what's worked with others to give us other thoughts. That's my only addition. That's my only additional comment.
Okay, can I just, do we have consensus on the scene that's on the sign? Anybody disagree with that, or is everybody okay with that? I'm taking silence as a yes?
I like the scene.
It's very representative, it's nice.
We have something.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, sure, Ms. Kane.
Is there any way to have an interchangeable seasonal scene? That's clearly a beautiful spring day. How about a beautiful winter day or something in between? Is that opportunity available to us?
Probably all about money, but I would imagine you could change out the panels. Mr. Fagerman, wasn't there one place that had panels that you could change? They were like kiosks downtown? Am I remembering?
We've done a lot of kiosks, but the image is once, you don't want to go to the trouble or cost of changing out seasonally. But, you know, typical of New England is, all communities tend to want to have a fall scene. So something spring is very unique and very dynamic. And I love the fact that, you know, that there's a real feeling of vitality in this image. This is, by the way, a painting based on the photograph. It is a painting.
So I think, Mr. Chairman, may I interject, please? Yeah, I just wanted to address Mr. Kane's point. We're actually, at this point, bumping into our ceiling on what, how much we received for funding on this project. So to have Fagerman Design go back and redo this in a fall foliage, I just don't think we have the funding at this point. I think we probably have enough to do slightly different framing around them, or, and to get rid of the core of the Commonwealth and put in town center. I don't see that as a large project. But to actually rework it in different colors in the time that it'll probably take to do that, we don't really have at this point. But what I would say is that, you know, when we're looking for the selectmen to eventually sign off on something here, either as an endorsement or recommendation, what have you, there's no reason, there's nothing ironclad about this. If in years to come, as funding does become available, the selectmen say, "We love this picture, but we'd like it in fall colors instead." If we have the funding for it, then we can do that, right? There's no hard set, this is not written in stone, per se, right? This is the way forward. We're looking for that kind of endorsement, say, "Yes, we've got to a place we like." And then when the funding comes available, the person who builds it or constructs it, or what have you, manufactures it. If we want, if the town wants something else, then I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility. And just use this as the template. So I hope that makes sense.
Yep, no, it did. Okay, so beyond the obvious that we're going to look at the posts and whatever for it, to try to give it a less modern look, what's the next step from here, assuming that we come to consensus on that? Then what do we do from here?
So the idea is that the board, my hope was tonight that we'd get somewhere close, and it sounds like we're pretty close, that the next meeting, then, of the selectmen would be a vote of recommendation or endorsement of some kind. I'm going to talk to Mark about exactly how that's been done in other towns when the selectmen vote. So I'll work with Mark. He'll send us some examples from other towns this week. And we'll replace the core of the Commonwealth with town center and then work on, including some more decorative colonial type posts, if you will. And I will say, you know, I think the focus of the committee wasn't necessarily on the frame of the picture, but rather the picture itself. So things like the posts and what frames the picture can obviously be amended and modified. But I'm going to speak with Mark, see how much money we have left in the budget. And then next time, hopefully, you know, five or six minutes discussion, and then hopefully a vote by the board.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
I have one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering if instead of core of the Commonwealth, if we can't come up with something that we like better, that we could maybe try, like, established in 1727 or something of that nature? Just an idea.
We could also put in the name of the chairman.
Oh, that's a good idea, but we should wait until.
I'll pick out a font that works well with this. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau?
Can we get the PowerPoint? Because I don't think that's in the drive. I see some of the slides are in the drive, but I don't see that slide with all the text. So unless I'm missing it, I'd like to get that.
Sure. When Mr. Kane and Mr. Fagerman are putting together those other examples of actual signs that were built, I'm sure they can include those in that.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Kane and Mr. Fagerman. So we'll talk about this again in two weeks. Great, thank you. I do think we, I do think we're making progress. So artistic stuff sometimes is a little hard for everybody to get on the same page with. But I think we're getting there, so thank you very much for your work. Okay, Mr. Kane.
Yep, so this is the, oh, sorry, just closing a window. Yeah, so this was the, I just wanted to provide an update on where we are with the town center rezoning. We, so since I last spoke to the Board of Selectmen about this in February, the last in-person meeting the planning board held, I presented as a working group, it wasn't a public hearing yet, the overview of all the new zoning articles for the town center. Pretty much read them through A to Z. It took a good amount of time, answered a lot of questions. We had not a massive turnout from the public. We had, it was a lively turnout. We had some good questions from the few people who were there. And since then, we've opened the public hearing for the April Planning Board meeting. The May Planning Board meeting, we again held the second public hearing. The overall responses we've received so far have been really quite positive. There's been a few great ideas from different people in town that we've incorporated into this. And just like we said before, we were taking the two public forum feedbacks we had very seriously, and we incorporated a lot of those concerns into the zoning language. I'll give you one example, just one, because I'm not going to, I know you have more on your agenda tonight. So is one of the public forums and stakeholder meetings, I can't remember exactly which one it was, but somebody spoke up and said, you know, "We want to make sure that in the town center," and this was a small thing, but it had been overlooked by planning staff, was, you know, if we have dumpsters, or if you have, you know, HVAC units, are these going to be screened in a really decorative way? So we took that comment, we wrote up some great language for it, and we included it. So that's kind of the way we've been going right now. The reason I'm holding off on a full-blown presentation to the board tonight is because of the, what's happened with, well, what's not happened, I guess we'd say, with town meeting, the fact that we don't have a certain date for it. So typically, as you know, in April, I would present kind of between the public hearings for the planning board to the selectmen, and then the finance committee for their feedback and analysis. That hasn't happened, obviously, because of the situation that's going on with the whole COVID crisis. So what we're going to do, and I've spoken to Steve Buley, the chairman of the planning board, about this, is that for all of the zoning-related articles, we are simply going to keep them as open public hearings on the planning board's agenda until we hear from town leadership about when the town meeting is going to occur. And at that point, once we hit a date for that, that will trigger the board, that will be the sign for the board to start to wrap up its public hearings and to write its recommendations. And at the same time, I would then schedule my own presentation to this board and the finance committee. So I just wanted to remind all the board members, before I sign off, that if you go to the planning board or the Planning and Economic Development Department websites, you can see the most recent versions of the zoning on there, as well as the other two zoning articles that are before town meeting this year. So please, by all means, take a look. Some are more interesting than others, but the fun ones up there, too, with all the pictures. So please take a look. If you have feedback now in advance, this is a great time for us to make those changes. I feel like we've got extra public hearing time out of this. Small silver linings where you can find them is what I'm trying to find. And the fact of the matter is that we are still open. So if there are, if anyone on the board or the public listening tonight or watching tonight has any other feedback they want to add, I mean, this is the time to do it. And let's, you know, we'll make some omelets out of these broken eggs, and we'll get there and hopefully have an even better zoning, town center zoning districts. So that's all I really wanted to say tonight, Mr. Chairman, just to provide everyone with a brief update about where we are and kind of how the planning board is going to be handling things as we work towards an eventual town meeting this year. Mr. Chairman, your mic's off, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay, let me try that again. Any members of the board have any questions, comments, Mr. Kane, before we move on to the next item? Okay, well, I guess we're all set.
Thank you very much, though.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item of business. Some meeting with Keith Elms, my animal control officer, to review and possibly act on the nuisance dog complaints at 47 Memorial Drive. We continue to be receiving complaints and about noise from the dogs. And we get conflicting opinions of what's happening from the springers who own the dogs and the neighbors who are being affected by the barking. So we received a couple of letters. We asked the animal control officer to review what's happening and to give us an update and possibly make recommendations of how we can handle that situation. So Officer Elms, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. So this has been an ongoing situation for the past, you know, about year and a half. So I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, but also thorough. So obviously, in March of 2019, before I was employed by the town, the, you know, the dogs at 47 Memorial Drive, as a result of a hearing, they were deemed a nuisance by way of excessive barking. And they were given a, you know, set of four orders by the town in an effort to ameliorate that nuisance produced by the barking. Just a brief summary, they were ordered to wear barking collars at all times when they're outside. They were ordered to attend training dealing in barking issues. They were ordered to be inside, placed inside the barn on the property when there were contractors working, which was a trigger for them. And they were ordered to be kept inside the barn from the time of 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So, you know, the complaints from that time, since I've started, have never really stopped. They've gotten better, gotten worse. Recently, things have been, quite a few complaints from there. As far as violations of any of those orders, in the report I had written to the selectmen, I didn't find any on them ever being out between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Recently had several complaints on one Sunday morning about two weeks ago of the dogs being out before 7:00 AM, which, you know, unfortunately, I'm not working at that time, so I wasn't able to personally corroborate it. But based on the number of calls I got from residents I don't even normally hear from on that street, I tend to believe there was some level of barking at that time. Since the hearing last year, I mean, some things have changed upon the property where the dogs live. The springers are in the process of fencing in the entire property. They fenced their fence, the length of Patriot Lane along their property in an effort to reduce any kind of triggers from people walking, landscapers on Adams Farm, things like that, that would set the dogs off to bark. They have gotten a number of domestic farm animals, some livestock, which they've been, they are zoned for. They've been operating a small farm operation up there. And they're of the opinion that the dogs need to be outside as a working part of the farm. That's why they have the dogs, to protect their, you know, their other livestock from predators, foxes, coyotes, things like that, as they do normally see on their property. They're hoping the fencing will solve a lot of that, but it's not complete right now. One major issue is the dogs were ordered to wear bark collars, which whenever I've gone up and asked them to see if the dogs are wearing them, they've always been very compliant with that. But bark collars just don't seem to be effective on these dogs, you know? I think at this time, if we proceeded without, you know, any type of further action, we would continue to get the complaints. One remedy I possibly had was, you know, ordering the springers to try a different type of bark collar. I have that, made that suggestion, you know, on a few occasions to them, which they've never, they've always stuck with the one that was approved by the former officer. You know, I was thinking to, if we can order them to try a new collar, possibly give it, you know, a 21-day time period, see if that makes any effect in the barking. I mean, if they, if it doesn't, we can reevaluate from there, or I can reevaluate from there. If they're not compliant, if they don't want to try a new collar, we could possibly find them in, you know, violation of that order by the town and issue a fine, or possibly, in the future, send the matter to district court. So that is basically where we're at, at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I have my mic off. On the issue of the collars, would, are there really different kinds that asking them to change would make a difference? Is it, I mean, is it because of the fur that's so thick? What?
It's possible. I mean, the collars they use now, they do give a slight after, you know, a couple of warnings, they do give a slight shock. Melinda, the dog owner, she has shown me in the past where she's trimmed the dog's fur to get closer to the skin, to make better contact. However, you know, they're very large dogs, they're great purring, and I don't think that that mode of action with that collar is, they really, I don't think they really are affected by a shock like that. They do make collars with different modes of action that may be more effective in helping curbing that. There's ones that, you know, spritz citronella, there's ones that use sound. I think it should possibly be explored.
Okay, thank you. Board members, anybody have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman? No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Beth.
It's okay, Mr. Kane, you can go first.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question I'd like to add, because as I understand it, the parcel is used as a farm, meets our zoning for a farm. So can something that is within zoning actually be considered a nuisance?
A dog protecting livestock is very much an element consistent with a farm. But I'm wondering if it can't even be, by its very definition, a nuisance. And I don't know if council has been asked to look at this, but I have that basic fundamental question. I'm sure it's annoying, I'm sure it's all those things. But if the use is consistent with zoning, the activity is consistent with that use and the zoning, can it be a nuisance?
Good question. Did you do any work on that, looking into that, that issue?
I have not consulted with council. I did have a few conversations with some folks. And I, from what I gather, you know, having agricultural use or a farm use doesn't necessarily, you know, give you carte blanche. And I know I'm probably stretching in some ways in a response to Mr. Kane's question, but I don't think the application would be as broad as that, you know, anything that may occur on there would be permissible if it is related to the farm use. It's something that I could get a more definitive answer on, you know, and get back to the board. I would suggest to the board, and I think the direction that Officer Elms is moving in is prudent. I would be hesitant to allow the board to vote or change the order that was put in place previously, since we're not under the benefit of a public hearing to allow the dog owner to be able to comment on a change in the type of collar. I think if the board wants to take an action outside of a recommendation, that the dog owner should be afforded the opportunity with notice of a public hearing.
Great, thank you. Any other board members have any?
I'd like to make a comment.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I can see some phone numbers here. But if you're in the audience, one of the people who are involved in this issue, this is not a public hearing, so we're not taking public comment tonight. What all we're doing tonight is discussing the situation with the animal control officer to see how we might proceed and do something that... um, and do something that, i- if, if we do do it, that's going to be effective. We're not, we're not taking public comment this evening. Um, we do have letters from our neighbors, um, and we are aware, we are aware of the situation. Um, but right now, we're just, uh, publicly talking about what our next steps would be. So I, I'm sorry if you wanted to talk, but that, that's not, um, how this was set up this evening. So, um, I, I'm afraid you'll, you'll just have to listen to our discussion. Um, Mrs. Cassavan, did you, um, did you have something you wanted to ask?
I did, but, um, it was in reference to the farm and the zoning, and Mr. Kane covered it. So that was my question.
Okay, thank you. Um, other members of the board? Okay, um, then what I would suggest, if Mr. Mizikar, if you could look into the issue that Mr. Kane, um, brought up, I think that would be helpful. Um, I, I think the new law, the relatively new law, compared to your law, doesn't give us as much discretion on what to do. Um, so, um, if anything was going to happen, I think we need to understand if we did something, whether or not it would actually be effective. Um, Mr. Elms, could you, um, just so we have the information, follow with um, the brand, whatever of that, um, of that bark collar that you're talking about, whi- whichever type um, you think might be more appropriate, so we can at least be aware of what we're talking about?
Yep, I can definitely do that and, uh, I, I have that information for you guys. I can, I can send that over. And, you know, I do, I do understand the need for the dogs to be outside on the, you know, as, as a working part of the farm, but, um, and I know there are certain exceptions to, to nuisance, uh, noise complaints from farms and things like that, but, you know, the dogs were previously declared a nuisance, so I don't know if, um, you know, before there was a farm in place up there, so I do not know if that would, uh, I don't think that would vacate any, any nuisance order that was already in place.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, well, sometimes people find that more effective. Um, no, I was gonna say, does anybody else have, um, any, any other comments, um, whatever? I think we'd get a Mr. Mizikar a little guidance, Mr. Officer Elms will get us that other information and, you know, if we have the information, we'll, we'll take a look at it again. Um, at least find out what our options are perhaps at the next meeting. So, um, otherwise, um, then we're just gonna move on to our next order of business. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Officer Elms. Okay, um, then our next order of business is a meeting with Christopher Maynor, a town moderator, um, to review and act the set on the tw- uh, the twenty-twenty annual town meeting um, in accordance with chapter fifty-three of the Acts of twenty twenty. And I, I don't know if anybody had a chance to read the document that Mr. Mr. Maynor sent out, um, about how these meetings could take place in social distancing, in social distancing, et cetera. Um, and so, uh, Mr. Mizikar, why don't you start off on, on where you want, where you want to start, and then, um, we'll, we'll get into the discussion, um, with Mr. Maynor and decide, um, perhaps tonight what we're gonna do.
Sure, um, just briefly, and I think this is very consistent with the thorough document that, uh, the moderator has provided. You know, it is my recommendation, uh, this evening that the board, um, signed a warrant for Monday, June twenty-ninth at seven P M. At the high school fieldhouse, uh, or on the grounds of the high school is how the warrant has been drafted. And, um, that will, um, allow us for some flexibility in and of the site itself.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, you're looking for us to vote the date of the town meeting tonight, right? Is that correct?
Yes, and sign a warrant.
Okay.
Through a s- separate agenda item.
Right, okay. Um, so, a- assuming that we do, um, vote to set the meeting on, on the twenty-ninth, we're even working on the assumption that we may not have the numbers we need for a budget um, and not even know if we could, if we could hold one of those meetings, we're still gonna have to do all the preparation. Uh, planning that, um, we actually could have a town meeting um, before, before we make that decision. So when would the decision, what's the decision point? If we, if we did set, if we voted to have a town meeting on the twenty-ninth, where is the decision point on when, um, um, Mr. Maynor would have to make a decision on extending or postponing the meeting, what, whatever you call it, for, for up to thirty days? What, what's, I mean, when do we need to pull the trigger on that?
For the June twenty-ninth, my opinion would be your June ninth meeting. As you correctly identify, there's a series of things that have to occur in advance of the meeting, including public hearings and documents that need to be produced. At least the warrant, um, needs to be distributed out to town meeting members and often, of course, there is more provided well in advance, including the entire finance committee book and detailed, um, recommendations on the finance committee's votes, et cetera. So, um, I think that, um, in any given cycle, we need a minimum of at least three weeks to be able to get through what remains in the, in the warrant process after you sign it.
Okay.
You're correct. I do not feel we have sufficient information to move forward with an annual budget at this point.
So, at, at this point, we'd be, be setting the date. I'm pretty much certain that we'd be asking Mr. Maynor to postpone the town meeting. Is that, is that the gist of what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood who we were. Okay, um, board members, any comments, questions on this? Um, I will, will ask Mr. Maynor to say a few words.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cassavan.
Um, I have a few comments and thoughts on the town meeting. Um, Mr. Maynor, I appreciate the document that you sent. Um, I did take some time to read it, and it is daunting, I think, what would need to take place in order for a town meeting to happen in a way that maintains social distance, and then this takes into account the safety of the participants. Just a few things that I was thinking about. If we were to have a town meeting on June twenty-ninth, um, I'm not comfortable yet being indoors. I don't know how I'll feel um, in that amount of time, let's say six weeks, I guess, about being in an enclosed sp- uh, space with other people, even if we were to be six feet apart and socially distanced. I wonder if other town meeting members would also share that concern, and that would impact their willingness to come to a meeting and whether or not we'd be able to have a quorum. I also am concerned that if people, um, have read the articles that are, are circulating about your exposure over time, being a contributing factor to whether or not you would, um, contract COVID, um, feeling like the longer you're in the room, the more vulnerable and at risk you become. And I worry that some, that situation would lead people to have less of an opportunity to debate and talk about these important articles, um, that are critical um, to the warrant. Um, so those are the kinds of things that I'm thinking about. I also, of course, can then start thinking about what happens if we have to be outside in the time of day and the heat and the, and the bugs, and I, I could go right down the rabbit hole of, of possible um, risks and contingency plans. Um, but right now, um, I, I think what I'm understanding is that we need to come up with this date and, and decide on this date so that you have the ability to postpone the meeting for thirty days. Is that correct?
Mr. Maynor?
Yes, that is, that's correct, Mrs. Cassavan. In order to, in order for the statute permitting the moderator to recess or recess and continue uh, or just continue the town meeting date, there has to be a posted date initially set and a date in place set by the selectman. And then, um, and then we go from there. We basically keep tabs on all of the issues that all of us are concerned about between now and then with relating to the public health, the current public health, um, state of emergency and the ability of the town uh, to prepare for a town meeting in a space that's large enough and open enough theoretically to permit um, that significant social distancing. I'm not, I'm not contemplating limiting it to the, to the six, going, aiming for a six-foot social distancing. I think one of the reasons we were talking about the fieldhouse was because it, it theoretically could permit even larger spaces between attendees. But in order to get that process starting and in order to trigger the statute that permits me to continue the meeting to another date, we have to have a posted date, and then the continuation notice can actually happen anytime right up until, you know, the day of or day before, because it's, it's, it's intended to be used in an urgent situation.
So.
Your mic is off, Beth.
Sorry. So just as a follow-up, agreeing to this timeline is, is what's the first step in making sure that you have the ability to make the decisions that you need to make as far as, um, continuing the town meeting to another date?
That's right, and I certainly would never presume to act in a vacuum. Um, the, the, the new language added to the statute recently by the, by chapter fifty-three of the Acts of twenty twenty specifically says that if the reason for the continuation is because of a declared state of emergency by the governor, then for reasons of public health or public safety, then it would be my obligation to consult with the Board of Selectmen, the manager, local public safety and public health officers uh, before making a decision to continue to a new date certain and place certain. So we'd all be basically working on this together and in constant communication with each other as we got closer to, as we got into the month of June and, and tried to put a plan together, and then take, took a look at the circumstances as it gets closer to June twenty-ninth.
All right, thank you. I definitely appreciate that and, and the level of, of thought that you're putting into, into the decisions. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Any board members? Not at the moment. Okay, Mr. Um, Mr. Maynor, do you have anything that you'd like to offer, um, to the discussion?
Um, I, I don't, I, I, I feel like I've had enough conversations, uh, with various people, with various of you folks, um, informally over the last several weeks to feel comfortable with your proposal tonight. Um, I will say just anecdotally that, um, as I told, as I've told many of you, uh, that across the Commonwealth, this issue of where and when and how to hold the annual, the three hundred, give or take, annual town meetings that have to take place this spring and summer have been, plans have been formulated in many different shapes and sizes. You probably have heard that there may be some virtual town meetings that, uh, take place among representative town meeting towns if the statute that's, the bill that's currently pending in the legislature um, should pass reasonably soon. A number of towns are considering that, but there are those, several of us in Shrewsbury who have had this informal discussion don't feel that it's something that we'd be interested in doing in Shrewsbury, and I agree with that position. Ver- the, the issue of indoor versus outdoor spaces, daylight versus evening times have, have there any number of examples of those plans going on in different towns? The size of the town, the length of the warrant, all those issues are, are factors determining the time and place. For right now, I, I agree that we should be considering a date um, later on, uh, after the first, uh, day of summer, and I thought that the fieldhouse would be a good place to start to see if we can put together a plan that would permit enough social distancing with, in consultation with public health officials and public safety officials so that we can all feel reasonably comfortable and then see whether or not the pandemic issues are, have started to dissipate significantly by the time we get closer to June twenty-nine or some other date as it might continue to.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Mizikar, once the legislature has a budget, um, i- if we're still under a state of emergency, we're not, we're still not compelled at that point to have a, a town meeting, are we, by law? Or are we?
No, we're, no, we're not compelled. Uh, as long as we're under the state of emergency and there's public health advisories or restrictions that may prevent us from holding it, you know, whether those restrictions be, you know, because of a um, regional matter or a local matter or a statewide matter, uh, we're able to continue the meeting. So there are, you know, eventually challenges that begin to present themselves from the, uh, monthly budgeting approach, and they uh, fall more operationally on the school side of things and on the town side of things. Obviously, they're very cyclical, um, you know, in, in the start of the school year, um, is, you know, the greater the amount of certainty, the better, and we're way behind the schedule, uh, that the superintendent and his team would like to be on already. So, um, obviously, the further that we go through the summer and closer to the start of school, regardless of what teaching environment that is, it's a greater challenge for them as it is for kind of a month-by-month basis for the balance of town operations. So I will share that with you, that we'll start to feel some operational pressure, rightfully so, uh, from the school department as we, uh, move towards the, the late summer months.
Okay, will we also, um, at some point, um, start to face problems if we stay on the one-twelfth for, I don't know how many months, say, three or four months? Then we're, we're gonna lose the flexibility that we would have with the budget. And I understand that we, we have to be cognizant of the public health issue, but at some point, it would seem like staying on a one-twelfth is gonna cause its own set of problems.
It, it certainly would, yeah. I mean, uh, eventually we're going to have to use, um, estimates, um, even if there's significant uncertainty and, and just be resigned to the fact that that may mean that we need to meet more frequently, al- although that's a challenge um, in this environment, but, um, that uncertainty, uh, you know, we, we use the best estimates that we have, but you're right, uh, once we get so far into the year, we are really, uh, start to uh, burn the candle at both ends if, if we don't have a, a full year or a balance of the year approach in mind when we're making decisions.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, so, uh, Mr. Maynor, do you have anything you want to add right now?
No, thanks very much, and, um, good luck to all of us over the next month or so.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, so, um, Mr. Mizikar, um, is, does this, does this, um, agenda item require the vote, or, or would we do it on, I, under item thirteen?
Um, I, I would suggest that you vote to set the, uh, time, date and location of the town meeting through, uh, this article. It's something that we normally don't have to do for the annual town meeting, but I do recommend you vote separately on that this evening.
So, let me, let me ask you then, though, um, if we, we'd set it for the, you're asking for the twenty-ninth of June, correct?
That is correct.
To get to this issue of inside, outside, I, I would think if we were gonna have it outside, we might be more inclined to do it during the day. Or are we, we at the point right now where it's almost a given we're not gonna have this town meeting? Because if we, if we, if we move down this path and we decide that, um, for whatever reason, that outside would be the more appropriate venue, I, I think we're gonna run into other problems at night. So it seemed like you'd have to have it during the day. So if we put on a, a date and time, a time today, doesn't that tie our hands on when we could have the meeting, or should we be looking at an afternoon meeting?
Well, I, I think that, um, the request this evening is to, with as much certainty as we, as we have, I certainly was not officially considering an outdoor venue when I certainly was not officially considering an outdoor venue when we did it. I believe we have, so first of all, we, we, we clearly have flexibility after posting the warrant to be able to make changes to the warrant and amend it officially in accordance with all the relative statutes in advance of the meeting. So if we come up and we're, you know, say fourteen days in advance of the meeting and we want to say, let's have it on the football field or some other outdoor location at a different, you know, on that property, we can provide that clarity. Our current, the, the town meeting legislation that's in place for our governance structure does have specific limitations that I would need to consult with council with regards to the time of town meeting. If it occurs during a weekday, it cannot occur before seven P M. And on a weekend, it cannot, on a, on a Saturday, it cannot occur before two P M, I believe. So I believe that the authorities and powers through the state of emergency would allow us to override that, but that's something that I would need to consult with council on.
Okay.
If I can just interrupt, Mo, I, I think that these, the way the statutes are written right now, chapter thirty-nine, sections nine and ten A, that even, even adjusting the time or location of the meeting and keeping the same date or moving the date, it can be a change of, the moderator can, can authorize a change in the date, time and/or location of the meeting. So if, if it got to the point and there were no other way to make the adjustment that you all decided you wanted to do, I think I'd be able to do that on very short notice.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure we didn't box ourselves in. So then, Mr. Mizikah, we we would be voting to set the date of the town meeting as, for example, on June twenty ninth at seven, seven P M at the high school or Oak Middle wherever?
Yeah, my recommendation is at the high school field house or on the grounds of the high school.
Okay, and for now, we'll just leave it at seven P M?
I think so, yes.
Okay, so high school, field house or outdoor fields, seven P M, June twenty nine, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have motion the second to establish the day of the town meeting is June twenty nine, seven P M at the high school field house or outdoors. If there's no other discussion, I'll ask for a vote. Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Just, I was just thinking, we, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We aren't gonna be able to have it on a Monday during the day because of people's work schedules.
Right.
Just if anyone at home is thinking that that would be something we would do, I want to make clear that we understand that people have commitments during the day during the week.
Right, right. We're not. That's why I was asking how much flexibility we had, we had set it. But I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more discussion on this over the, over the coming weeks, but we've, we've got the date set. Any, anybody else before I ask for a vote? Okay, Ms., Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
This is Apollo. Aye. Okay, so we've established the date. Now we can move on to the next order of business is to review and act, sign the warrant for that town meeting, the annual town meeting. Mr. Mizikah, do you have anything you want to run us through before we want to sign the warrant?
I would just briefly like to put the articles up and review them with the board and make sure that there are no questions about the order or the, the warrant articles themselves. And I certainly don't have to go through them in any detail. I will share my screen in order to do that. So we're all on the same page and we can take it at the discretion of the board. So this is a slide that we used last time. There are forty-one articles, seventeen of them, which I believe are critical in order to provide for the day-to-day operation of the town should we start the town meeting and not be able to complete it. And with that being said, I have reorganized the, the warrant from its more traditional format that's used within the community in light of those seventeen warrant articles. You will see the bottom article on this slide, which is the capital budget that I do not have marked as critical, but within the first seventeen or eighteen articles, and I put it in there just for consistencies, consistency with the balance of the financial articles, although we would not need to consider that technically in order to be able to continue our operations in service of the town. So those first seventeen critical articles and the capital budget are listed first within this order. And then we proceed to other articles in relative importance for the balance of the meeting. And this article is, or excuse me, these articles are unchanged in title. Since the previous meeting on May twelfth, we have amended language relative to article thirty-six for the Worcester Sand and Gravel parcel that is included in the warrant that identifies all the parcels and the changes related there too for those zoning changes as proposed by the new owner of that property. So I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm, I'm happy to go through these articles in any detail that the board may like me to, or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I think we're, we're pretty familiar with these articles. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the warrant as it's laid out?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Should the town meeting deter, assuming that we sign this warrant tonight, or we vote to sign this warrant tonight and we hold the town meeting and whenever and wherever we hold the town meeting is the will of the town meeting that they only want to handle the critical issues and they want to delay the non-critical issues. Now, I understand we cannot pass over a, an article. So I'm, I'm guessing if the town meeting simply didn't want to take any of these matters up, they would quickly, or it would quickly vote no. My question is, is by voting no, I'm, I'm thinking about that zoning change, are we, but in any case, are we you know, hurting a proponent or an action? Is anything going to have to be delayed for a certain period of time if the town meeting chooses to effectively vote no, simply because they don't want to spend the time on it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
My thought on that, Selectman LeBeau, would be that if that was the desire of town meeting, that they would either purposely or otherwise adjourn the meeting due to a lack of quorum or other ruling by the moderator that we are unable, unable to proceed rather than not considering the balance of the warrant articles.
Understood. Okay, that sounds to me to be a thoughtful solution to that, to avoid that issue. Thank you.
And couldn't, we also, we went through those first seventeen and people didn't want to do anymore. We could adjourn the meeting to another date and time, right? Still keep it active. You just adjourn it. You would, so you wouldn't have to take action. Okay. Okay, anything else on the, on the warrant? I think the layout, or the ordering makes, makes sense. If we're gonna, if we're gonna be rushed or we're gonna have to do this in small bites, I think I think the way it, it, it's laid out makes sense. It gets the stuff that we need to do to keep running. You know, we, we get those things done. So okay, if there's, if there's nothing else on this, I'll ask for a motion to sign the warrant for the annual twenty twenty town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay. Next item is to review and act to accept an offer of a gift to the town of Shrewsbury. Mr. Mizikah, do you want to explain this to the board?
Sure. For the Beale Elementary School that is currently being constructed, there has been a number of things that have been considered for the main stairwell. There's a prominent wall along the stair that is essentially two plus stories in height and it's a rather dramatic feature of the, the design of the school and it is intended, of course, to be very welcoming to the K through four students who are going to be educated within the building. And the architect and school leadership in conjunction, including Superintendent Sawyer, have been working with a number of, of ideas. And one of the things that came to their mind is that within the existing Beale building, there's a mural on the wall known as Make Your Mark by an artist by the name of Peter Reynolds. And Mr. Reynolds, I'm, I'm uncertain whenever he did the mural within the existing building, but he's certainly now and may have been then a very prominent author and illustrator and a very successful person and, and still lives within the Commonwealth. And the architect Katie Crockett of Lamro Pagano Associates and Superintendent Sawyer reached out to Mr. Reynolds to see if he was interested in providing a piece of artwork that could be enlarged and expanded and appropriate for that space. And quite fortunately, Mr. Reynolds has agreed to provide such a piece of artwork. But, you know, in order for him to perform this work, there is a fee associated with that, which is I, I understand to be reasonable in, in this type of endeavor, which was fifty-five thousand dollars. Well, so with the excitement of Mr. Reynolds being interested, but then the price tag, which is not a part of the project cost, we thought we hit a roadblock. But we were very fortunate that Ms. Crockett had reached out to several individuals and found that Robert Turkanian was willing and excited to pay for the cost of the commissioning and completion of this artwork within the new Beale project. So you have before you this evening a letter from Chief Joseph and he is offering to cover the cost of this artwork through a gift of fifty-five thousand dollars to the town. Upon the acceptance of the gift, if the board is so willing, the town would enter into a binding contract with the artist to ensure the appropriateness and timing of the work which should be funded through Mr. Turkanian, Chief Joseph's gift. You're still muted, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I'm, sorry. It's a very generous offer. We're, we're lucky to have Chief Joseph in town. He's been very generous to the town in a number of locations. Any questions, comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
I will tell you, as I think we have at various updates to the board, the building committee has considered elements of the, the existing Beale school to be critical in terms of transferring those. You, you all know about the story wall and certain elements that we will be taking from the current Beale school to the new Beale school. And certainly with the realities facing us, we would not be in a position to take advantage of this very unique situation if it was not for the kindness of Chief Joseph. So I'm hoping we can support this and obviously communicate to him our sincerest thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is just another example of the extreme generosity of a community member and the way that Chief Joseph has found to bring these special touches to our town buildings and to town properties in ways that wouldn't be possible without his generosity. It's, it's just always very inspiring, his desire to give back. And I think this is just wonderful and there, this will be enjoyed by so many generations of children and teachers and families who use the Beale school.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if, if there's nothing else, then just need a motion to accept the offer of the gift to the town of Shrewsbury from Robert Turkanian?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, then motion second. Any further discussion? There being none. Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. Apollo, aye. Okay, um, we'll, we'll have to make arrangements to sign that and certainly a lot of thanks to Chief Joseph, because I agree that would not have happened if it wasn't to him. Item fifteen is to review and act on the appointments to the Police and Municipal Campus Building Committee. This is being, we're at the point now where we need, we need a committee. The architect is at a point in the design process that he's, he's ready to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mizikah, but he's actually ready to start talking about design because he's got the area, the size of the areas that he thinks we need to put this thing together. Now he needs a committee to actually start working on the building. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So we, we advertised good more than several resumes, et cetera, a, a bunch of candidates. I know I have the ones that I, I, I think would be, well, they all would be good on the board, but I think some have particular skills and backgrounds that would be better. But I believe we're ready to vote tonight. And if we are, it's take comments from the board or a motion to nominate people to the committee. We have, we have three citizens at large and we have one member of the Board of Selectmen to appoint. So having said that, anybody have any comments, any ideas about this?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, first, we're, we're fortunate to have such a breadth and scope of people who are willing to step forward. And I hope the manager will continue the practice of the prior manager in terms of if people aren't chosen for this evening's efforts to, to keep their resumes on file for another opportunity that may come up on another board. That's often how people find their way in and it's very interesting. I would like to nominate Justine Snyder, Joseph Morrow and Patrick Pitney. I think each in their own way brings a unique and appropriate set of assets to the committee. I think Mr. Morrow's experience on the South Row mixed-use building, the public safety building, is certainly appropriate. And we know from our time of, of working with Patrick Pitney on the Finance Committee, he's a very level-headed and thoughtful character. So I think that the three will make a good addition. I don't know Ms. Snyder personally or what the history is on the other two gentlemen, but I think her background, once again, complements the overall makeup of the committee.
Well, I did have the opportunity to talk to Ms. Snyder and I found her, her actual work was it, what she said she did in her resume, she did. And I find her to be, it sounded like a roll up your sleeves and, and get the project done. She's done some very complicated projects. And she's worked for the federal government, state. very, um, complicated projects. Um, and she's worked for the federal government, um, state, she's, um, I think, I think she's a good addition, and I agree with you on those other, um, those other two gentlemen, um, my opinion, so, um, you made the motion, right? Do we get a second?
Second.
Did you, I'm sorry, that broke up.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Okay, are there any other question, any other comments, uh, before we were asked for a vote? Okay, if there being none, um, all in favor of the slate that is put, put, um, we're, oh, we're not doing that kind of vote, wait, it's Grolka, I'm sorry. Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Samia?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. DePaulo, aye. Okay, um, those are the three residents at large. We need, a member of the Board of Selectmen, um, nominated to committee. Does anybody have any, uh, comments? Anybody they'd like to nominate?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, uh, what my colleagues are thinking who have not had a chance to be on a building committee. I will tell you, being on Beal has certainly been an interesting effort. Um, as much as I would love to, on it, to be on the building committee for the police department, that would be a little obnoxious of me, so I obviously will not do that. I would encourage the committee members, uh, who have not been on to give it some real thought. I don't know if people have had a chance to consider their, uh, desire to do so at different elements. I will tell you, it's a, it's a complete time suck, uh, as you're at different points of the, the process, particularly with the MSBA. But, um, thus far, I've also found it to be very rewarding, uh, because it's one of the few times you get to work across boards, twice a month, so. Uh, I don't know what my colleagues are thinking. I'll, I'll simply offer that as an observation as someone who's had the great opportunity to chair a, a building committee.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I, I agree, they can be a lot of work, but they can be very rewarding also. Um, so, um, anybody have an, an interest, um, in taking this position? Okay, um, I'm hearing silence. Um, if, if.
Chairman?
Yes?
Chairman, in light of the silence that has been so clearly articulated, I think I would like to nominate, uh, one member of the board, to be the board's representative on the, um, building committee, if that person is so inclined to accept the nomination.
Okay, um, please proceed.
I would nominate Mo DePaulo.
Second.
Okay, um, I, I, I would like to do it, um, but, um, as you said, if somebody hasn't done it, I have, um, with the high school and the middle school. Um, so if somebody else, um, wants to do it, I'm fine with that. Um, if people, um, are too busy, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do it. So, um, I'll leave it up, up to other members who maybe haven't had the opportunity yet.
Mr. Chairman, I found the, I found the silence deafening.
Ms. Cassavan, did you have something you wanted to add?
Uh, just in the past few years of working with you, I know how important it is to you to see the police station project come to fruition, and I think you would be a perfect fit on the building committee.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, there's no other comments, then, um, just, we, we got a second on that. Okay, if there's no other comments, then, uh, Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, one last chance to say you wanna do it.
Mr. DePaulo, you'll do an excellent job. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, all right, um, we'll hold executive session to the end. I'm gonna drop down, try to go quickly through the correspondence. So, uh, item seventeen is a letter dated May third from Scott Nolan, twenty Blossworth Road, regarding an amendment to the zoning map for Worcester Sand and Stone. Um, just paraphrasing, um, Mr. Nolan is expressing, um, concern about, um, the aquifer, um, which, um, which we know is gonna have to be dealt with in the, in the, uh, any permitting process. But, um, we'll make note of that, and I'm sure that that's gonna come up, uh, through the zoning question in, uh, through site plan approval, with the, uh, planning board. Item eighteen is a letter dated May fifth from Keith Elms, you know, patrol officer, with an update on the Dodge at forty-seven Memorial Drive. Um, we've already dealt with that issue, um, this evening. Item nineteen is a email dated May eighth from State Representative Hannah Kane, um, regarding Route twenty in Shoesbury. I do agree, um, that she put it was exciting news. Mass Highway, um, has been able to, um, secure funds to do, work on Route twenty from Route, Route nine and twenty up to just, uh, just at South Street. It's a, it's a, it's a fifteen million dollar project at this point, and, um, having the master plan process that we just went through is gonna help speed it up, so. That is exciting news. It'll be interesting, um, to see how that progresses. Also, in that letter, um, Mass Highway is gonna lower the speed for the last three eastern miles of Route twenty, uh, from fifty to forty-five miles an hour, um, after doing, um, traffic studies, so. Some good news, um, a couple of good items there. Item twenty is an email dated May thirteenth from Kevin Presnecki, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, um, in Worcester, um, capital investment plan, public meetings. Actually, almost all of them occurred. There's one tomorrow, and I forgot where it is, but it's nowhere near us. Um, item twenty-one is, um, an email dated May fourteenth to Representative Kane regarding State House news stories on the government's statement, regarding local aid, um, that, um, he wants to try to keep the towns in good shape, but, which is encouraging, uh, but we're gonna have to wait and see how things develop. Item twenty-two is a letter dated May fourteenth from Michael Heffernan, Secretary of Administration and Finance, regarding the federal, uh, coronavirus relief fund that we talked about earlier. Um, again, we're eligible potentially for three-point-three million, but the use of the money is restricted. So noted, item twenty-three is a letter dated May seventeenth from Robin Dev Luke, twenty-eight Patriot, Patriot Lane, regarding the nuisance stocks, um, on forty-seven Memorial Drive. Um, that is why we had the discussion with Mr. Elms this evening, um, and we'll be looking further into that. Item twenty-four is an email dated May eighteenth from Representative Kane, regarding, uh, reopening information. Uh, I think Mr. Mizikah, um, covered some of that, uh, earlier in the meeting. Item twenty-five is a letter dated May nineteenth from Nick Kropetka, Highway Division Manager, to, uh, Kevin Mizikah, regarding a sweep, street sweeping, uh, report. Um, street sweeping is completed. It took eight weeks to get the work done, and, um, the sweepers collected two-hundred-and-thirty-five tons of, uh, sand, dirt, whatever on the road, so, um, good job, got it done quickly, considering the circumstances. Item twenty-six is an email dated May eighteen from State Representative Kane, regarding the Mass Tax Payers Foundation revised FY twenty-one tax revenue forecast. Um, they're predicting, um, revenues are gonna fall by, uh, six billion dollars or nineteen percent from what the January benchmark was, so, um, obviously, um, it's gonna mean, uh, some serious spell tightening in the state, um, over the next year. Item twenty-seven is an email dated May nineteenth, um, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding unrestricted government aid and chapter seventy funding. Um, she and, um, I think Kim Ferguson, Representative Ferguson, um, advocating to, uh, keep the funding at least level for those two items, and to keep the circuit breaker, uh, funding at, um, seventy-five, fully funded to the seventy-five percent level. So noted, item twenty-eight is an email dated May nineteenth from Chris Lund, two thirty-five Cherry Street, an appeal of approval decision for a class-one license for NICO, two thirty Cherry Street. Um, Mr. Mizikah has, um, responded to, uh, Mr. Lund. Um, apparently, um, um, an appeal of that sort is not, um, it, it, it's not allowed, um, and, um, so he, he informed him of, of, of that. Item twenty-nine is an email dated May nineteenth from Jay Ducat, MNVU Training LLC, one sixty-five Memorial Drive, asking us to consider letting small fitness, um, studios open. Um, I think we can all, um, sympathize, with, with the plight, um, that he has, um, as many of the small businesses, but, um, I, I think, um, we can send him back a note and tell him that, um, we do not control, um, when those, facilities will be able to be opened, um, but, um, certainly can discuss it with, um, our state rep and state senator. Item twenty-thirty is an email dated May twenty-first from Representative Kane regarding new CVS testing in Massachusetts. CVS at South Street and Route nine, um, now is a center to do testing for the, uh, COVID-nineteen virus. People, it is open to the public, but you still have to meet certain criteria, um, and, uh, it's through the drive-through, but if people go to CVS dot com, um, they can get the information of, um, what they would have to do to get tested. Okay, um, I don't think there's anything to come before else, an open session. So I would, in a motion to convene into executive session, uh, for the purpose of approving minutes pursuant to, uh, chapter thirty-A, section twenty-one, um, various subsections, um, three, A seven, A two, six, six again, and A four, um, and not to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Cassavan?
Aye.
LeBeau?
Aye.
Kane? Mr. Samia?
Aye.
I think we might have lost Mr. Kane.
Yeah, he fell off the meeting, I think.
Okay, um, and, uh, Mr. DePaulo, aye. So, um, we are going to, um, convene into executive session, not to reconvene in open session. Um, so, uh, we thank you, uh, everybody who's watching. Stay safe and healthy, and, uh, my next meeting, uh, should be on June ninth, so good evening.